How you doing?
Daddy said he calls the muller.
He calls the muller?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
I'll call this meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Witten to do the invocation and pledge the flag. Fireheads.
Lord, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come together in this great republic and be the business of the county and the sunshine of what we intend to be. We always ask you to look after our military. We pray for the people of Ukraine. We pray for our first responders, and we pray for those still dealing with sickness and health issues and their families. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, indivisible, liberated, and just for all.
Mr. Cross, do we have any additions or relations?
Mr. Chair, I had one addition that's been circulated to you to discuss proposed bylaws for the Fort White Columbia County Utility Committee.
Can I make that number six in your presentation?
If you don't mind, sir, if we could put it under discussion and action, it's not going to be a public hearing. I'll just go right before Mr. Kirby, though, if that's your pleasure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna pull number one from the consent agenda and now come back at our next board meeting. We got to...
Yes.
Nothing changes. We just got to do a different way we're doing the funding.
Mr. Chair, we also would like to pull item number nine.
From the consent agenda?
No, from the regular agenda. We'd like to delete it from the agenda.
Okay. Do you have a motion for approval agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We have Corbett All Day. Public hearing.
Good afternoon, Corbett All Day with Guardian Community Resource Management. Offices Dade City for the record. We are here tonight for a second public hearing for a community development block grant. It's the... Community Development Block Grant Program requires two public hearings. We have the first public hearing on May 3rd where we discussed the program, what the CDBG program is, how it's to benefit low and moderate income persons, and how we're eligible for an economic development category grant and board commissions approve going forward with an application.
Yeah. We need to go back and change that. That should be March 3rd until May 3rd.
Oh, my goodness, yes. I'll change that for the record.
Okay.
And get a revised document to the clerk. That's my error. So March 3rd, and then we had a fair housing presentation on March 3rd. We met with a prospective grant business partner and viewed the project site. And tonight, we've scheduled a second public hearing to look over the most favorable application that we have. The project wave is just being called, and we're gonna review that specific project tonight. This is a... We are proposing to apply for $1.5 million in CDBG Economic Development Funds. Stormwater improvements would be the work. The entire scope of work would be stormwater improvements for Highway 90 East Industrial Park to accommodate expansion and job creation by project wave. It would include that, and then, of course, in that, it would be engineering and administration. The facility is located on U.S. Highway 98 East, Lake City, Florida. A minimum of 43 full-time equivalent jobs are being pledged by the project wave, two part-time, equal, full-time. So it's 43 full-time equivalent, and at least 51% of all the jobs created will be made available to persons of low to moderate income and pre-employment. That's their pre-employment income, and that would be jobs that don't require a cert certificate or a higher degree. There's a bird's eye location of the project site on Highway 90 East. There's a project area location in the proposed industrial area for the build-out, and that is in that area of the project. The proposed budget, as you can see there, $120,000 for CDBG administration, $160,000 for engineering, 1.22 million for stormwater improvements for the total grant of 1.5 million. The cycle is open, so we can submit anytime. Expected application goal is April 30th. We do need to get some letters and some documentation from the business to submit the application, the job creator. June 2022 would be about the time of site visit where the state would come and look at the project. Award about August and a release of funds. Staff is planning to start the state environmental review, a desktop environmental review, early and pay for that out of county funds in order to save six months of time for the business. And then estimated bids about January 2023. And that's it. That concludes our public hearing presentation. The process, the CDBG process now is that we open it. The next thing is we open the public hearing for comment, and then we close the public hearing, and then we have V O C C discussion. And there is an action item afterwards, the signature resolution authorizing the chair or the county manager to sign the application. And with that, I'm here for your questions.
I'm gonna open public hearing on this right now for public comment. Does anybody have a comment? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the signature of the chair and the county manager for this community development block grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Glenn, how do that meet the timeline on Project Wave? I mean, 2023? What are their timelines?
Well, it's an interesting question. The reason it's complicated is Project Wave is still in negotiations on the purchase of the land. They've not actually executed the purchase agreement yet. Some of their timeframes have changed as they get better engineering on their site plan, so it's not a firm timeline. We believe it'll meet their timeline. They would like to do it, of course, faster, but they still haven't done, like I said, the basic steps of actually executing on the purchase agreement and those types of things.
So in other words, until they do everything they need to, the clock don't start ticking until they do that?
Right. Ultimately, they've got to agree to buy the property. We have a couple other companies that are out there that are very interested in the area as well that have aggressive timeframes. So we think we can make it work. You know, we are in the process of also applying for grant funding for the rail side of the construction of the project, so that's gonna be going on as well. You know, Kevin, Chad, myself have met with Warehouser about the construction of the ponds, so there's a lot of moving parts at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll call. No, it's not open anymore. It's closed. It's closed. Joe?
Yes, sir. I have a series of public hearings this evening relating to county roads as well as subdivisions. The first is a application, or excuse me, petition for closure of a partial, excuse me, partial closure of a road, Southwest Pleasant Terrace and Southwest Central Terrace in District 2, Commissioner Ford's district. On page nine of your agenda packet, I've enclosed a, or included a map reflecting the closure areas. Essentially, the re... This is actually one road, but it comes from two different directions to the same low spot, so it actually has two different names. But the portion that's being closed is almost always underwater, according to Ms. Trammell, and she has now acquired these adjacent parcels and would like to just close that. She'll still have access to her property through the public right of way. Mr. Chair requesting open public hearing, and then if there are no objections, no legally sufficient objections, would ask for adoption of the resolution.
I'll open public hearing on the resolution for Southwest Pleasant Terrace and Central Terrace. Does anybody have any comment? Seeing no one has a comment, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution vacating a portion of Southwest Pleasant Terrace and Southwest Central Terrace.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next hearing is in District 4. It's a portion of Southeast Shady Way in the town of Lulu. This is an unopened portion of the road. If you will turn to page... Pardon me. 16 of your agenda packet, you'll see the portion of road in question. It's basically on the plat for the town of Lulu, but it's never been open, never been used. The adjacent landowner, Ms. Croft, has petitioned for closure of the road, would request open public hearing on this matter, and if there is no objection, to adopt the resolution closing the portion of Shady Way.
All right, I'm gonna open public hearing on resolution to vacate a portion of Shady Way in the town of Lulu. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close public hearing on the Shady Way resolution. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution closing a portion of Southeast Shady Way.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is in the exact same neighborhood. In fact, it's on the opposite corner of this intersection with Shady, and this is a portion of Southeast Red Casin Drive, also in the plat of the town of Lulu. Brandon Parrish is the petitioner. You will find a map indicating the portions of the road to be closed on page 23 of your agenda. You can see there that that portion of road has never been opened, although it does appear on the, as a portion of Southeast Red Casin Drive on the county's mapping software, that road is in fact not open. The paved road comes down and turns left off of Red Casin onto Shady. I would request opening public hearing, and if there is no objection, adoption of the resolution closing this portion of Southeast Red Casin Drive.
I hereby open up public hearing on the closing of a portion of the Southeast Red Casin Drive in the town of Lulu. Does anybody have anything to say about that? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close a portion of Southeast Red Casin Drive.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The final public hearing I have for the board this evening, Mr. Chair, is a petition from Christopher and Teresa Wilkie seeking partial vacation of lots 2 and 3 of Block A, Timmaquon Crossing. The board might recall that Linda Johns had a similar petition relating to the exact same subdivision that was heard at our last meeting. Mr. and Mrs. Wilkie have acquired a parcel of land a little south of the piece of land that Mrs. Johns is gonna sell, but it has the same problem in that it crosses boundaries with this old subdivision. They're not able to pull a building permit so long as those boundaries exist, so they've requested vacation. I do want to point out to the board that after this occurs, the only three lots of this subdivision were lots 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3 of Block A, and now they will all be either fully or partially vacated. With that in mind, the only thing that's properly before the board this evening is the question that's raised by Mr. and Mrs. Wilkie, but I will be asking the board to just vacate this entire subdivision in the near future to eliminate this issue on our maps. But for the time being, the only petition pending is Mr. and Mrs. Wilkie's, and I would ask that a public hearing be open, and if there is no objection, that the resolution approving the partial vacation be approved.
I hereby open the public hearing on a partial vac... Partial vacation of lots 2 and 3 in Timmaquon Crossing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve petition for partial vacation of subdivisions, lots 2 and 3, Block A of Timmaquon Crossing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt consent agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approvals, consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Also move to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adoption of consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I think this is your addition, Joe.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, and I do want to apologize for making the addition at such a late date. However, the Fort White Columbia County Utility Committee will be convening at the 1st of March, excuse me, the 1st of April, and we wanted to be able to have some feedback from the board. At the utility committee's last meeting, they had requested some changes made to these bylaws to provide for the composition of the committee. I've quoted that language in Rule 7 there in the memo that I provided to you. Essentially, what's happened here is the board would like, excuse me, the committee would like to be composed of seven individuals. Currently, it's composed of four individuals, two town councilors, two county commissioners. They would like for each governing body to have the ability to appoint another at-large member, and then of those six individuals, and with the assistance of the county manager and the town manager, identify a seventh at-large member that could then be appointed by the town and the county. Because they're going to be meeting at the beginning of April, wanted to try to get the board's feedback on these bylaws this evening. And again, my apologies for the late addition.
I was trying to breathe too, Joe. What's the qualification for the at-large? Is there any, just anybody in the county?
The at-large individuals would be citizens of Columbia County, so they would need to live in the county. And then the last requirement in G is that all members, including the four, you know, government members, shall maintain a high level of familiarity with both county and town utility operations and shall render advice to the county and the town in the best interest of ongoing cooperative utility efforts of both governments. So the idea here is each governmental entity controls three seats without, you know, without reference to the other, but that seventh seat, your advisory committee will weigh applications that are received by the town manager and the county manager, and they will recommend back to you, we would like this to be our seventh member, and then the town and the county through joint resolution would appoint that individual. It's a way to try to keep equal voice for both governing bodies, but get an odd number of members.
Any more discussion?
We discussed this at the utility meeting, and the members of the committee at this time agreed that, or we did at that meeting, that this would be the, definitely the, create a committee for this utility. So I'll make a motion that we adopt these bylaws.
Okay, go ahead. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a public comment on this. Okay, come on, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three things, actually four. I was just wondering why this thing had to be on at the last minute, the committee meeting? The last one was weeks ago, and this just got on this afternoon, this morning, sort of like the broadband thing the other day. What is the problem? And I'll take the answer when I sit down, if you choose to answer. Why this stuff is always now coming up, more and more stuff in the county is coming up at 12:00? As some of you may know, there's a... Run-up in the price of fuel in America. Corby County also has the run-up. Last time I filled up my car, it cost $5.25 a gallon. And he's not... I spoke to Commissioner Ford, and he mentioned it costs $120 to fill up his tank. Fuel is getting expensive. This is a big county. So with these utility meetings and other meetings, if people can't attend, and of course, this concerns Fort White and people all the way into the north end of the county and the east and the west, it's a lot of driving, you're having a meeting at 9:00 in the morning, that these are either being broadcast live and recorded or recorded so that people can see them at another time. Because 9:00 in the morning, most people work. And I don't know that that's fair to the public, so I would like to see that either this be put into bylaws, that these meetings be made available to the public and recorded, or you could just ignore it. That's up to you guys. And the third thing is, as Mr. Foreman, as the chairman just pointed out, the public gets the right, anybody attending the meeting, it's not a county commissioner, at these meetings gets the right to comment after you guys make a motion and a second. That's the way you guys have been doing it since you started having rules and let the record reflect. Commissioner Ford is shaking his head, yes. I mean, it's not a secret, that's what you guys do. Yet Mr. Foreman makes these rules where the public doesn't have the right to comment after the motion, but has to comment before. So number one, I would ask you to consider that that's not right. I mean, the rules should be fair across all meetings so that anybody attends knows what's going on, and I would ask that those be changed now. And the final thing is, just about everybody in the universe, except for this place, has three minutes worth of public comment time, and once again, this is two minutes, and I would ask that that be changed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foreman, would you like to answer?
Yeah, and I echo Mr. Lilker's consent, concern about the late hour of the addition. You guys know I'm pretty loathe to do this. I exchanged a draft and received some comment back from Mr. Cobeline yesterday indicating that he was gonna submit these to the town. And honestly, if we were gonna go into a joint committee meeting at the beginning of April, I wanted to have some feedback from this board. So if the board would like to, you know, defer on whether you finally approve these to another meeting, I'm fine with that. Wanted some feedback to be able to carry to the joint utility committee at the beginning of April, trying to be efficient here, but certainly understand Mr. Lilker's concerns, and to the extent that he's raised them, I actually share them. But I also believe these bylaws fairly consistent, fairly normal for what we do with committees, and it was really just the composition issue that the committee had raised that I wanted to get the board's feedback on.
Well, I think we all know that we're dealing with something new to the county here as far as utilities. We're dealing with the kind of Fort White attorney, we're dealing with the county attorney, and we're dealing with another board. So, and time is of the essence of some of this stuff to get it moving, and, you know, you have to have the approval, pretty much our consent, from everyone to move forward in this, to do it in a timely manner. I think we should move on with what we're doing at this time, and there will be ample opportunity to answer questions about this at different meetings.
I agree with Mr. Ford. You know, I'm a constant critic that government moves way too slow, and time is of the essence here, and, you know, we, this is a fairly routine item of bylaws that are consistent across a lot of committees, and I move for we need to move on.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have four items for your consideration this evening. The first, as this board has directed us to move forward with water and sewer out of the Intermodal Park, I'm requesting approval for a task order for $214,650 to do the engineering. I'm requesting a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Budget Amendment 2251 in the amount of $214,650 for North Florida Professional Services, desire water plant at the Intermodal Park.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirby, you said later on in this month or next month, it would be next month now, that you're gonna give us an update on all our capital projects and with a critical path on each one of those projects?
Yes, sir, that is correct. As most of you are aware, we have a monthly staff meeting as it relates, and I'm obligated on a quarterly basis to do this with this board, and our intentions are to do just that on every project. Yes, sir. And that's slated for the early part of it.
And at that meeting, at that meeting, I'm requesting that everybody that we are in contract will be present to ask questions if there's any question.
You refer to the various firms and all?
Okay.
Not the various firms that are doing the work?
Yeah, on all capital projects. If there is an outside consultant participating in our outside project, we would like to have them at the meeting when we give that update, so if the board have questions concerning the critical path, then we can ask them directly.
Okay, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item is waiving tipping fees. On the 5th of March, once again, a cleanup of the Osceola Forest was done. Robert Shepherd, Shepherd's Container Service donated a container, a truck, and his time. Scale tickets, $180 for this activity. In the past, this board has waived the tipping fees for this project, and to kind of help us going forward, I'm requesting not only to waive those $180, but to memorialize on an annual basis this cleanup, the waiving of the tipping fees.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion.
Question. Mr. Cross, I thought under our landfill policy, we might waive them, but yet, you know, the county would have to pay that amount. When did we start waiving the money without putting that money back into the account at landfill?
This is something we've done every year, I guess, for how many years, Kevin?
I believe this is our third year, and, Mr. Williams, we still do that, sir.
No, no, no. My question was, are we reimbursing the landfill or just waiting to feed?
I believe we always have to reimburse, but I'll ensure of that.
Pardon?
Yes, sir. I believe we, the county has always reimbursed the landfill enterprise on it.
Okay.
The main purpose of this is it's every year they call me the day that they're gonna do it, so I'm asking permission to memorialize this in the future, that this is a common practice.
One other question, too. It's been so long since I checked on it, and I had to tell, to make the board aware of that. Years ago, the DOT came to us, and this board granted them permission to dispose their old tires and waste that they pick up in Columbia County, and the landfill with no cost, no charge, and it turned the county was reimbursing the landfill account back for what they bought there. Do we still do that now with DOT?
Commissioner Williams, I do recall when we've done that. I do not recall us going through that exercise in the last couple of years with the DOT, but I would check on it.
And it wasn't DOT contractors, it was DOT themselves. They would pick up trash and dispose it at the landfill, and we would subsidize the tipping fee.
Yes, sir. I recall the practice. I'll just have to talk with Pam. I don't know if we've done it the last couple of years. I just don't know if the DOT has done it. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Yes, sir. All right. The next item is Kirk Court. This is Little Road of 108. It was brought to my attention when this board gave me permission to move forward on Oakland, LeMond, and Eloise. Basically, geographically, you'll say mobilization. If we add it to this list of construction, estimated cost is $28,900. That's just on the schedule values. I added 5% because of the small project. Once again, this is right across the street from the little road we just paved a few months ago over Mr. Witt's district of 108. I'm requesting a recommended motion to approve construction project Northwest Kirk Court in $31,000 from 303-8082-5413046.
Uh, move to adopt, that's in my district, Mr. Chairman. That's in my district, but do you?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Final thing I have for you, Mr. Chairman, is we went out, take a look at three motor grader leases. This is a very common practice we do here in Columbia County. We did receive three quotes. Beard at 126, 650. Newman Tractor at 338, 096. And Ring Power, 121, 269, 39. Recommended motion award the bid to Ring Power for three motor graders, capital of 120. Annual payments, 121, 269, 39. Effective date concurrent with existing expiring lease.
Submove.
Motion.
Second. Anybody second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. I only have a few items myself, so it should not take too long. The first item is one that we're pretty excited about. We received the bids in on the generator for the Richardson Community Center. As you remember during the budget, we decided we wanted to add a generator to the Richardson Community Center because there is no shelter in the city limits of the city of Lake City. By adding a generator to the Richardson Community Center, we can use it during emergencies as a home shelter and as a place people can go to when they feel unsafe during hurricanes, heavy windstorms, and that sort of stuff. So, we budgeted for it in the capital projects as part of the budget. We had four qualified bids that were received. And we're recommending to go with the lowest bid, $118,750.
I make a motion to accept lowest bid of $118,750.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the generator. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is pretty standard. When we have an employee that's requesting unpaid leave, it has to have board approval. So this particular employee is still out sick, is unable to return to work, has used up all their leave, gone through family medical leave, and they're still requesting an additional unpaid leave request from the Board of County Commissioners.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the reclassification of the position from office manager to economic development specialist. As you know, the current office manager in the Economic Development Department has a lot of responsibilities that are not in the office manager job description. Specifically, they serve as the primary contact for all economic development projects. They meet with clients. They create marketing materials, they write and administer grants, and they coordinate with state agencies, partner agencies, the state itself. All things that are not included in this official office manager position. So we want to redo that and create a new economic development specialist position with a job description that actually reflects what this individual does. They would also act as or serve for the economic development director in the absence of the economic development director. So basically, we're requesting you approve a new position description, which is in your packet, authorize the position in the HTE system, and then amend the pay scale to reflect this change.
Submove, Mr. Chairman, on the recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then finally, economic development review or an update. The reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is this was presented to the Economic Development Advisory Board, and we felt it was important information for you to receive as well. So all this stuff has been presented in the public previously. And like I said, we want you to get the same information that the Economic Development Advisory Board gets. So in 2019, we had 22 projects, of which you can see several of which were key critical projects. We did a paralysis rubber recycling. They're still active. They've not gone away. They haven't built, they haven't committed, but they're still actively looking at and pursuing and trying to figure out if they can make it work in Columbia County. We had the Cornerstone Development. It's still active. Unfortunately, the original job provider fell through. We're now working with new job providers. The CDBG grant that we got for Cornerstone ended up expiring, so we had to turn the money back in. But again, the importance of Cornerstone is it really amplified the need to expand water and sewer, or expand sewer to the I-7547 interchange, which is leading to other developments at that interchange as well. So it was key. It's still out there. We just need them to have the job providers, and we're just waiting on the developer. Asplun, I guess that's how you pronounce that, expanded their operations. And they're currently leasing a warehouse on Ring Court. And then finally, the Ellisville Burger King. It's built, it's open, it's operating, it's doing great business. The reason it was important is it identified the fact that Ellisville Wastewater Treatment Plant is again at capacity, and that's why you authorized us to do yet another additional expansion beyond the 25,000 we did or authorized under the CDBGs. So we'll do that 25 plus the additional. So we'll be adding 50,000 gallons of capacity in Ellisville based on the fact that we reached capacity much more quickly than we anticipated. Finally, in 2020, there were 16 projects. The big notable one was Project Bell, which we all know went somewhere else. But what Project Bell did is it basically said the city of Lake City does not have the water capacity to provide to industrial clients in the mega park, and it led us to go out and get the 2.1 million water use permit. So that was a key to at least getting us to where we need to be so that we would have the capacity on water. Yes, sir.
And boy, this project really hurts that we lost it because where they located at is still in the underground aquifer that flows through Columbia County. So they are using our water, but we're not getting any benefit for it because we didn't have the ability for them to locate in Columbia County. They went to Clay County, but they still using our water from the underground aquifer. And that hurts.
Yes. As you know, the city has only 700,000 to 800,000 gallons of capacity left on their permits. Our consumptive use permit is 2.1 million, which won't cover our future forever, but will cover us to bring in industrial clients for at least a while. And yes, they are in Clay County and they are drawing from the same aquifer. So finally, 2021 was a big year. We had 40 projects. That is unknown in Columbia County. Project 21-1 is in the final stages of the zoning permitting and wetland delineation. And that's the one that's up on 25A that's going to trigger us to get the Bell Road Extension Project, where we're seeking federal funds to fund the Bell Road Extension Project. 2021-4, of course, is the U.S. Cold Storage Rail Spur that you approved. 21-7 is Project Wave, which will be the anchor tenant at the industrial park. 21-19 is Project Delight. They are wanting to locate adjacent to Wave or somewhere in the industrial park near there. However, they needed warehouse space to start so that they could actually commit to the area. They have recently signed a lease on that warehouse space and will be stockpiling and distributing their products from that warehouse until they can build a facility, purchase the land and build a facility at the industrial park. Project Freeze is a cold storage distribution that we're still working with. Project 21-32 is a travel center in Ellisville. That led to, again, the additional expansion of the wastewater at Ellisville. Then 21-35 is Project Birdcage. That was the one that left. It prompted us to look at, we need a gas feasibility study, a site readiness grant. And if you'd like to give a quick update on where we stand on that?
Good evening, Commissioner. This is a quick review. We, since it's under 25,000, we just sent out a request for quotes. Got four quotes back. Two of those came under the $25,000 threshold. Out of the two, one is a company out of Atlanta but has an office based in Jacksonville. So that's who we decided to go forward with. Working on the contract now that should be in place, and we can go ahead and get started on that study in the next week or two at the top.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
So in addition, now we also have Project Nova, which is a big project. And Glenn's worked closely with them on, they really want Norfolk Southern Rail at the industrial park. And they're working on how do we get Norfolk Southern at the industrial park. That's an ongoing project that will be a very large project when it happens. We have Project Wafer, which is a solar panel manufacturer. We have Project 21-39, which basically is the Highway 47 development. And that's the one where we asked you a couple weeks ago to let us work with the city. I'm putting in a master lift station. So that's a good thing that we're putting in the regional lift station. Still waiting to hear back from the city on that. And then finally, 21-40 is Project Sebus or Cybus, which is a food preparation, packaging, and distribution center. So that came in in December. So it's, again, these are still active projects. We're still working them. Finally, this year, just this year since January, we've had 10 projects. Of course, Project Cygnus, which is a solar panel manufacturer. We have Project Patriot, which is a food manufacturer and distributor. We have Project Snooki, which we know is an industrial manufacturer and distributor. We had Project Nuevo or Nuevo, which is commercial and retail. So we are still working commercial, retail. We had Project Crinkle, which we're still working, which is a construction material manufacturer. They're very much interested in the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. Again, they would love to be in an area near where Project Wave is. Finally, we have Project Pina Colada, which is a local manufacturer that wants to expand their facilities. And we toured their, or economic development staff toured the facility today to see how they go about their product. They want to expand on a large scale basis, and they want to expand at the industrial park because they want rail. We have Project Pit Stop, which is also wanting to go to the industrial park, which is a fuel storage slash refinery facility that also wants to open up a commercial truck stop at the industrial park. We have Project Reading, which is a local manufacturer that actually was brought to us by Mr. Murphy, Commissioner Murphy. And they want to expand their plant at their facility. And so we're working closely with them. We call them Project Reading. We have Project Comfort, which is a light manufacturing. And we also have Project Valencia, which is another industrial manufacturing industry. So if we got 10 projects within the first three months, we expect this to be a very busy year again. We're hoping to get a few more of them actually nailed down and under construction. But economic development is a very long-term process. Because they have to do all their due diligence, we have to do our due diligence, and it just does not happen overnight. But as long as we keep having these leads, we will grow and we will get development. It's just like any salesman will tell you. Sometimes it's a number game. You just have to keep bringing in more and more leads, and you will get the leads that you need to. So having said that, I wanted to say pass is prologue. What we've done in the past leads to where we're going in the future. So in the past, we had an inability to serve the county. So that's why you invested in the infrastructure necessary to attract industry. Now that we're getting to the point where we're going to have that industry infrastructure available, we are going to get to the point where we will get that industry. That's always been your problem, something said. Also, previous economic development successes over time required us and aided us by partners. Specifically, we had an independent IDC that operated separate from the county that was very successful in economic development. It was a committee 100. We believe working with independent sources with the county department is going to give us a better ability to attract some of these customers because the independent people, the non-county resources can do things that county resources can't do. So having said that, we use economic development consultants. It's not nothing, that's not anything you. I bring this up because last week we talked about economic development consultants, and somebody said, well, we'll bring it back up before the board. So that's why I'm bringing it back up, because you said we would, so we are. But again, economic development is a team sport. It's not something you can do by yourself. So in the future, economic development efforts needs the expertise and independence of consultants, including a rail consultant, because we are not experts on rail, engineering, utility consultants, again, because we're just now getting into the utility business. That includes water, wastewater, gas, and the recharge that we've talked about. Economic development and Grant, you heard today from Corbett, that he's starting the environmental reviews now so that we can meet the timeframes of the customers that are coming in versus waiting to do the environmental review at the last second. So again, we currently use firms to supplement our economic development staff because we don't have the expertise in all fields. Having said that, under the existing purchasing policies, the board has set thresholds. Anything under those thresholds, we can approve, the economic development department can approve, without bringing it back to the Board of County Commissioners. So there may be people we work with that never come back to the Board of County Commissioners. But again, we'll follow the purchasing policy that you established. And when it exceeds those thresholds, of course, we'll come back. Or if it's something we feel politically necessary, like the water plant today with North Florida Professional Services, technically, we probably could have signed it and not brought it back to the board. But we felt it was important enough to bring back to the board so that we have a clear statement from the board that we are going to build a potable water plant. We need to convey that that clearly to the city. Your approving that today allowed us to do that. So, you know, we judge it by the political nature of the contract and also if it meets the purchasing thresholds that you establish. So currently, we use consultants such as Guardian on environmental reviews when we need to fast-track the environmental reviews. We use ECT, the company that you signed up for us to do water recharge projects. They'll operate under scopes of work, much like all of our other engineering firms do. We use North Florida Professional Services for engineering, utilities, development. Again, you saw a contract with them today, or scope of work today, for them to build our water plant, which is directly tied to economic development. We use Morabass. Even though Warehouser pays them, they still let us use them. They helped design the rail. They did two or three grants of rail design. And they've been integral in a lot of the economic development talks that we have. We have the rail consultant that they're working with, with Warehouser. We did in the past have economic sector assistance. You all may remember Retail Strategies. And we said we wanted to do some retail development. We didn't have the expertise to do it, so we signed a contract with Retail Strategies. That contract has expired and we've not renewed it. The BEDC took it over for a year. They've decided not to renew it. But we have in the past said, for this sector that we don't have the knowledge of, we're going to bring somebody in to give us that knowledge, to give us the guidance, to get us to the people that make the decision to bring those firms to Columbia County. So in addition, we also work with EFI, Florida Power and Light, NFEDP, the BEDC, our lobbyists, Warehouser, and others on economic development projects. There's not a single economic development project that you see or hear that's just our department bringing it in. If it's just our department, it's only a very small project. Most of these projects take a team. And that's what I wanted to get across, is it does take a team. We're going to continue using that approach of teamwork, and we're going to continue, unless the board tells us otherwise, to bring in partners to help us keep that team focused on what we need to focus on. And that's my update.
Well, I think we all agree that economic development is how we move ahead in Columbia County.
And we desperately need the help of consultants.
And David, what's important, we are in a position now from the action that this board have taken over the last four years to put together the necessary pieces of this puzzle, finally coming together. So when that team goes out and talks to a company, we know what we're talking about. It's not, I guess we can, I guess we can. And what will make this, this whole process, as far as utility goes for the industrial site, once the gas study is done, we'll know exactly what we need to do to make sure that that team knows what it takes to get natural gas, get the gas there and the cost of doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no, I guess, it might be, I don't know. A company don't want to know, I guess. They want to know when can you meet my deadline? And that's the last piece of the puzzle that we need is natural gas. Then we'll know what it takes to get natural gas there. And we got a complete utility program in play when we sit down with a company.
Mr. Chairman, I 100% agree with Commissioner Williams. I think Project Bell, had that not happened, we may still be out here fountering. But that really caused all of us who put so much stock in the city's going to take care of utilities to take on that ourselves. And it was a big investment, a big undertaking. Luckily, the state has given us grants to help with that so far. But had we not done that, we wouldn't be where we are today. And as far as using consultants, I think you go way back to when I was campaigning for office and my speeches about economic development. I raised the same issues that a private, a private consultant could do things that a county employee can as far as economic development. So it's wise to use it as well.
I can say it pays off. Florida Power and Light, the partnership that our economic development staff has created with Florida Power and Light has led to several leads that are very strong, will be opening, and will be here. Plus, they help us make sure the power needs for any customer are met with rates that are competitive. So our partnership with people like Florida Power and Light is critical.
Well, I like that. I agree with Commissioner Williams, and we're moving in the right direction. And I think we have really come a long ways over the last four years. And I want to commend this board on their ability to see what was necessary for Columbia County to move forward and to act on that. And I think we're moving in the right direction.
So and again, to answer the question that was raised last week, not every contract's going to come before the board. Those that we have to bring before the board, of course, as well, those are politically sensitive.
David, that's why we put you as county manager to make those decisions and to, and we trust in your decisions.
I appreciate that.
Move forward with that.
And boy, there's one thing that we got to keep in mind is that to move forward with our game plan to be able to create an atmosphere where someone would, would make it easy for the IDA and our partners to lure company into Columbia County, we got to make sure that we keep the available funding through grants and through our county coffin. When something comes up, we have the cash flow to fund those projects with.
I think we're all committed to economic development in this county now. I promise you, we are, making a lot of steps.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Okay, we're going to move now to open public comments to the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just have one subject to talk about this evening and to ask a few questions. The broadband committee, it's in the Florida statutes. Florida Associations of Counties have written a lot about it, the Small Counties Coalition. Everybody knows about this broadband stuff. Mr. Witt said the other night, he gets everything from social media. I don't know if he's read anything in the news, but that's where he gets his information. And I did look at Mr. Witt's Facebook page today where he said the main, the online media would have known what happened at the previous meetings had he attended. And he didn't say that at the meeting. I would like to hear him say it again here. The article pointed out that there's been no notices. The meetings have not been noticed on the public calendar. Monday's meeting, or Tuesday's meeting, I don't remember what it was, went up the same day as the meeting. I guess it was Tuesdays, and I thought I had missed the previous meeting. You guys changed the meeting on the fly. So I spoke to people that didn't, that were just lucky like I was, that saw that had changed, although some people had gotten a text. So my question to you guys, and let me just dispel one rumor. I never told anybody, nobody's spreading a rumor out there that I wanted to be on that committee. I don't get any committee, I write stories. And who's ever spreading that rumor, you need to straighten yourselves out. And I'll just tell you right now that everybody can hear, I don't want to be on the committee, I go to meetings. Mr. Witt went to do a few seminars, and now he's an expert in broadband, that's fine.
Mr. Leal, I'll ask you to not, to direct your comments to the board and not to a single commissioner, okay?
It was directed to the board.
Thank you. No, it wasn't, you said his name, you directed it to him, direct it to the board from now on. I'm not going to argue with you.
I am, I'm not going to.
Thank you.
So my question is, why, why aren't these meetings noticed? Why weren't they on the calendar? Why are there no minutes? Why is there no material before the meetings? Why isn't there anything? Mr. Witt represents the whole county commission on that meeting. And I think maybe what we need to hear is something from the county attorney. Because either the county has to notice them, or it doesn't. If it does, then you've been derelict, then you haven't done it. If it doesn't, then I guess you can go on your merry way. And my final thing, thank you, Mr. Chairman, is, once again, this is a big county. This board mandate is very important. These meetings aren't broadcast, they're not recorded. Maybe considering the size of the county and the importance of the subject matter, you might want to consider doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Couple of different things in answer to that. These meetings are not required to be noticed, they are not attended by more than one commissioner. It's very similar to the 911 committee, or some of the other committees that we have that are not noticed meetings. However, Commissioner Witt does want to increase the publicity of this committee so that people know that they can participate, that they can take the test. At his direction, we have gone ahead and modified our webpage so that you'll notice the banner on our webpage allows you to get to the broadband page to take the test so we can determine who in Columbia County has service, who in Columbia County doesn't have service. Our next meeting is the 29th. We're holding them at the TDC building, the Economic Development Building, at 5:30. But legally, these were not required to be noticed, so that's why they weren't noticed. I did. Would you like to confirm, Mr. Ford?
That's correct. So I will speak to the broadband committee, since it's been a hot topic on online news media, local online news media. The broadband committee was formed at the instruction of the DO. It's an advisory work group in the county. When I formed that committee, I did put out a massive social media call to people from all facets that were recommended to be on that committee. We had about 25 people respond. We appointed all 25 of those to the committee. So anybody who wanted to be a part of the committee was allowed to be a part of the committee. We, I, we felt social media was the best way to get this out. Other counties have used the same social media model to do that. I'm sorry that some don't use social media, but that is a minority in today's society, especially when you're talking about a subject like broadband. It was not our intention to not notice that meeting. The meeting was not noticed due to an oversight. And in fact, Mr. Kraus did call me and ask me did I want to cancel that meeting. And I told him absolutely not, because again, I think government moves too damn slow. And to cancel a meeting that wasn't required to be noticed, and we had an important thing to decide, to me was not prudent. The reason there are no minutes to be kept is because we have one task to complete before the broadband committee moves forward. And that is the online, the survey of the county through an app and through an online survey to determine what the deficiencies in broadband in the county are. That is the only task we have, we have upon us right now. And that would be the only thing in the minutes, and that would be the only task in the minute. So I do think that as the committee has more to do, and it makes sense to take minutes in recording, we will. But, you know, again, anybody who wants to be a part of the committee is welcome. You know, we have 25 participants, we had a very low participation last week, and especially from our educator partners. But the school system did have something happen in their world that day, and we suspect that's why they didn't show up. But there are, contrary to what was posted on social media, there are educators involved on the committee, there are employees at Columbia County School System who's involved on the committee, and the school system is, is involved. And all other facets of industry and business are involved too, and we welcome even more. So this is going to be an ongoing thing. Meetings could happen, you know, twice a month, once a month, depending on the task we have in front of us to get going. But it's a work group, and we'll continue to do the work and continue to keep the public as informed as we can.
Any more discussion? Anymore?
I have something I want to.
Go ahead.
Okay, number one, I have an email from Chantel Brown. She's asking, well, let me just read the email. It's, name of her operation is Cats Alive. Is applying for a $10,000 grant for Florida Animal Friends, from Florida Animal Friends, which will provide 250 spay and neuter surgeries for cats in the Fort White area. Florida Animal Friends requires a letter of acknowledgement or support from the county animal control agency if it's available. In lieu of this, they are asking for a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners. And as the chairman, I would ask if you would have staff type up a letter of support for their grant, if you would, and you can get it to me, and I'll get it to them, or I'll provide the information.
Okay, are we done? We really weren't done with public comment, I didn't know if somebody else had one. So you have a public comment?
She's on this, she want to talk about.
Oh, okay, okay, come on, come on. I didn't know that was you she was talking about.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Mr. Ford, if you would like Animal Control to provide that letter, we would be happy to do so. She does amazing work out in Fort White and definitely helping us control the feral cat population. So if you would like to forward that email to me, I'd be happy to give you my email, and I'd be happy to draft a letter for you.
If you give me your email after.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, I would love for you to do that, and maybe get a letter from the board also.
Yes, both would be, would be great. That way, we're looped in, if she has any questions or needs help with traps or any other chicken contact us as well.
Thank you for stepping up.
I second Mr. Ford's request. Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed. Any more?
Finish public comment.
I don't think, you got public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lester McCollum from the Greater Lake City CDC. We were here in February with a request for the board to approve funding for the Sweetwater project, was an affordable housing project. Board voted three to two to approve the support for that project. Mr. Foreman requested a Zoom meeting with all the other supporters of this project. And we formed that, we had that Zoom meeting. And in the Zoom meeting, we was told that the county didn't have any money for this project. Commissioner, Mr. Kraus said we supported the project, but I don't know what that looks like in forms of dollars. We still need the money. So I would like some clarity of some information on what's going on.
We have engaged the services of a financial consulting firm. Marion Edmonds is our consultant. She's done these projects with these same developers across the state, she's very familiar with them. She did ask to see their pro forma, she's gone through it. She has now gotten the developer to reduce the request down to one and a half million from three million, but they're still asking for the loan. I did speak with Marion this past week. She's still of the opinion, based on her review, again, the process here is foreign to all of us. None of us have done this before, none of us understand this process. Marion is educating us, she's highly knowledgeable about this, done all of the state. There are examples of projects similar to this with as little as $30,000 in local support. So Marion is a little confused, and so she's trying to have her questions answered. She is working in concert with the developers to have all of her questions answered. Because frankly, until all of her questions are answered, we are, questions can't be answered. We have indicated that the amount of money of $3 million from our reserves would be a difficult task for the county to confront in light of rising prices and everything else we're dealing with right now with our infrastructure projects. So we were very frank. Again, we've engaged outside consultants to process this. So we did, you know, done exactly what the board asked us to do. But just as I indicated, every time this has come up, this is the kind of thing you have to do with eyes wide open. And so it's not the kind of thing where you can loan $3 million and not really have a full and final understanding of exactly what you're doing. We're developing that, we've engaged the consultants, we've got the experts. And it's in process right now. My understanding from talking to Marion last week is she's in regular communication. This is not, by the way, just one developer, there's multiple companies involved in this effort. You have a developer, you have Mr. McCollum here locally with his organization, you have credit underwriters, you have people that go through the application process for the credit underwriters, people who help them engage the competitive process to qualify so they can go through credit underwriting. It's a whole industry, guys, it's a whole industry. And so you're being asked to make a loan inside of an industry that we don't understand or know anything about. And so we are educating ourselves, we're making sure that when the board does ultimately vote on this, the board will have all the information. And again, just with one meeting, the ask was reduced from three million to one and a half. So the progress has been positive. We've been very clear in that the board is supportive of the project itself. But when we start talking about the dollars and cents, that has to be a business deal. And so that's being handled that way. It's not the kind of thing that's just going to happen on the snap of fingers. It's not going to. And in fairness, I think the consultants that are working with Mr. McCollum, they know that. They brought all their people to the Zoom meeting, they laid all their cards on the table, they understood our consultant was going to be dealing with it, and Marion's been in contact with them. So that's the status.
And I think that's what we, at the last meeting with Mr. McCollum, and I can't remember his name, Mr. McCollum, the gentleman that come with you, I think that's what we asked, and I, hopefully, we're doing, it sounds like we're doing our diligence.
The due diligence is being done.
Yeah.
And it's, I want to say it's taxpayers' dollars. And I'm going to tell you, when you go from three million to 1.5 million in a couple of months, gives me a lot of pause. Now, were they asking more than they really needed, or I may be completely out of line? But to me, we want the bottom line of what we need. They went from three to 1.5, that bothers me. I'm not a consultant or a expert on, but when I go to somebody and ask them for money, I'm telling them what I need, not what I think I can get.
Well, the county said they wasn't able to do the three million. So we had to sharpen our pencils. And we made other requests as well from Florida Housing Finance to increase the loan from them from the $10 million up to 11.5. To cover the difference between the county not being able to span the gap. So since the county couldn't do the three, the 1.5 is a request. Can we do the 1.5?
Who gave the 1.5? Who up there's the 11.5?
Did your consultant tell you that? You said you had been in contact with your consultant?
No, 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 you just said somebody, you sharpened your pencil and somebody gave an extra 1.5. Who was that?
We got from Florida Housing Finance. We were looking to them to span that gap. So we have to get the money together, so, and we still don't know the numbers. So we're constantly moving from point A to point B to find out how can we assemble that need, that gap money for the $3 million. And we certainly appreciate the efforts that being made, but it's a time-sensitive project for us. If we have to request an extension, it's going to cost us, out of the budget, money. It's going to cost a considerable amount to extend the request for the funding that we can't close to get all this money in order.
And I get it, and I know you've worked real hard on this, but it's also a taxpayer-sensitive project, and that's a lot of money to hand. And we got a lot of stuff facing us, gas, $15, you know, and it's, the county typically is not in the business. I don't know if we've ever loaned that kind of money, I don't know, but since before me. But, you know, you got to understand, we're giving away money that's not ours.
It's not a gift, Commissioner.
Well, I know, I know, but it's still money that, out of our reserve, that the taxpayers put in there, you know, so.
Well, we are, we still in favor.
I think till we get our information we need.
We have to.
I don't know how we move forward with this.
Can't.
I think, I think based on all the comments I've heard in these meetings when this topic has came up, the main thing that the county is concerned about is we're, in a sense, being asked to be a mortgage lender, a bank. And we've never been in that position before, which is, which is why, you know, Mr. Foreman has engaged the consultants and, you know, while we still don't have, you know, clear answers, and we're trying to get them on what that looks like and is our investment protected? And, you know, the other comments I've heard is, you know, if we do this, are those who loan money for a living going to be like, oh, the county's in competition with banks now? What are y'all doing becoming a bank? So all those questions about what this is and what this looks like, I think need to be answered because it's uncharted territory for us.
If, if we think about a regular mortgage If we think about a regular mortgage transaction, you know, homeowner borrows money from a bank, homeowner pays the bank back, homeowner keeps the house. It's not what's happening here. Okay, so there's tax credits at issue that can be leveraged, that can be sold. So as soon as the project goes into effect, according to Marion, there are tax credits that become available. Hey, because you're building this, we're going to give you however much money in tax credits. Those are sold to other businesses who want to use the tax credits in the future. That's what I'm talking, there's so many moving parts here that affect valuation, that affect the cost of money, that affect how much you're paying per unit. You know, that's a number that Marion ran and quite honestly, she told me she felt like it was high. I don't know if it's high. I don't know the first thing about building these places. She's done many, many, many of them. So there's all these places where she is working. And again, she's engaged. We've given her a special scope of work. Her job is to work with Mr. McKellum's consultants to figure out the best way, the most economical way for the county to still support the project. And she's convinced that there's still ground to tread. As long as she tells us that, I think we have to let it.
And as Joel said earlier, she has a track record with this firm. She's done other projects with this firm. They know each other well.
And like all of us, every one of us sitting up here, none of us would make a decision like this without hiring a consultant that knows what they're talking about. Because really, none of us knows what's going on. I don't think anybody in this crowd knows what's going on. And I know that none of you or none of us is going to loan taxpayer money until we have the full, I mean, everything. We want to know everything there is to know because it's not our money. And if somebody wants to take a chance with their money, that's fine. But I know that they, all these commissioners agree with me. We're taking a chance on somebody else's money. And I'm going to research it way harder than if it was my money.
Simply when she makes her conclusions, she'll just, we'll have her come up and give us a face to face report.
Yes, sir. She's going to render an opinion when she feels like she's got to the ending point. This is the last best thing I can do for you. This is where everybody's at. Now what do you want to do?
And that's due diligence. We have to do that.
David, when I spoke, David, when I spoke with you, I guess week before last, you said that y'all were waiting on for Mr. McCullin team to get back with y'all. Is that the conversation that Joel talked about now that they have had with them after you and I met, David?
Yes.
Okay. And those conversations are ongoing, Commissioner.
Okay.
So after we talked to the consultant, we didn't know what the county can do for us, a monetary loan or a grant for this project. Is there a timeframe for the consultant to make contact with my people or for me to know what's going on?
Mr. McCullum, my understanding is she's in regular contact with your consultant. So you may want to talk to them and find out where she's at. I had a Zoom call with her and her partner, Wendell, last week. And she's, they're providing her, so you know, there's large amounts of information you provided to the state, to Florida Housing Finance, right? In your competitive, you, your guys have now provided all that to her. She's now gone through it, okay? She now needs to see, and your guys are producing it for her. They're working on it. There's more due diligence that goes in. So remember, we talked about the big round numbers that you use when you're working with Florida Finance in the competitive process? And then as you guys winnow that down into finer details, she's going to go through that also, okay? And they're working with her on that. You may want to just talk to them and make sure that that's what's happening. That's what she's telling me is happening. So that should be what you're getting reported to.
Yes, yes. Mr. Kraus also mentioned maybe the possibility of a grant or something to our project.
What I was referring to is in talking with our auditor, Dick Powell, a loan of that length, the auditors consider a grant. They don't consider something 17 years out reasonable repayment. So they're going to treat it as if it's a grant. That's what the audit, that's how the auditors will book it in our accounting system.
And I think, Mr. McKellum, just to inform the board, this would be the kind of thing that would come up after the consultant makes her final report. But we did indicate during our Zoom meeting, you know, if the number was more digestible, you know, $3 million is a lot of money, but if it was something more digestible, I personally believe this board would be open to the idea of just a grant. You know, because 17 years at 1%. Like David said, the auditors kind of see that as a grant anyway. So if the auditors are going to see it that way and if the board can see fit to do it, but I don't think that number is going to be in the millions of dollars. So that's where we got to balance that out. But again, the consultant is going to give us a very well-informed opinion. And then, you know, the board will decide what to do.
It's actually 15 years instead of 17.
Well, it's functionally 17 years though because of the first two years. They told us not to expect all the money back until about 17. It's fine. I mean, it's okay. I understand on paper it's 15, but it's functionally 17.
Well, the board is still in favor of supporting this project. That's what I'm really concerned about.
We're in support of finding out if we, you know, we're, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there any more open public comment? Is there any staff comments?
Hold on.
Yes, sir. Oh, I thought, oh, no. You got any staff comments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirby?
Many times during the recent past, since we've lost our prisoners on the COVID, I am pleased to announce, I was in receipt yesterday of an MOU from the Department of Corrections. Basically, it's in Mr. Foreman's office for review. Once he returns it to me, it's my understanding through the warden that we will go through our training at the, I'm going to put six staff members at the latter part of next week. He goes back to Tallahassee, back to us. We're looking at roughly a couple of week venue. We have the equipment, we have 15 prison, prisoners, three crews of five. So I'm pleased to announce, after all this time, we should be back in that business in about a month. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Commissioner Ford. All the work you did at the Tallahassee level really helped us get to where we're at. So good news, I think we got our prisoners back.
And Mr. Kirby, I'll spoil it for you. I reviewed that yesterday and it's good to go.
Fair enough. By next Friday, we'll be, have men in training. And they're telling me about a two week turnaround after that, we're back in business, okay?
Kevin, on a comment from last board meeting on Class 3 at Landfield, are you going to bring us back a recommendation for this board to look at on getting Class 3 funding back where it need to be as far as setting aside a enterprise fund in order to continue to operate the landfill like we do now without increases on other tax revenue? Y'all present us a plan?
We'll do one, we'll do it as a big presentation as part of the budget process.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, while we're still on staff comments, I do want to advise the board, as I'm required to do under Florida statute, that we will be scheduling and setting a shade meeting on the Bayfield litigation. We did get final drafts of some settlement proposals today. And again, I'm obligated to tell you in a public meeting that we'll be scheduling that and I expect we'll schedule that in the next month or so.
And one other thing, Joel, we need an update on where we are at the mitigation bank.
Yes, sir. That's part and parcel of what's going to be discussed at the shade meeting because some of the settlement dimensions relate to that. Good news. I mean, I feel like what the board's going to hear is going to be very positive.
We still have all those credits up there and we are operating in areas now where those credits really could be used for mitigation.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know where we are on that also.
Yes, sir. We'll reconcile that. We'll have to make, we'll have to have a discussion about that as part of your consideration of the proposed settlement. So it'll work out real well.
Okay.
Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, one last final staff comment. We are getting into the budget cycle. We have two budget meetings in April. We need, we're requesting the board to look at their schedule in May and June so we can schedule additional work sessions. We've got the work sessions where the departments make their presentations to you. Those last year were, I think, on two days. So it's a lengthy process. So if you could check your calendars and let us know your availability in May and June, that'll help us schedule those meetings.
Thank you, sir. Any more commissioner comments?
I have one. I'm going to be requesting that I be removed from the Lake City Columbia County Utility Committee. I'm on the Fort White Committee and I don't, I don't think I should serve on both. Talking to Mr. Kraus, he said Commissioner Williams has expressed interest in being on that committee and if it's all right with the board, we could make, take action right now.
Do we need to make a motion, vote on that?
I think you as the chair, I think Mr. Ford's telling you that he's resigning that position. I think you could.
Mr. Ford, you're done. Mr. Williams is a new committee member of the utility committee, Lake City, Columbia County.
Only reason I serve on there, that I got anything that comes up in utility committee. One of my favorite presidents, Ron Reagan, I never forget when he was overseas speaking with the Russian president at that time and they was in there negotiating and all. And before he would make a decision, he would come back and say, is this good for the United States? Now, in the decision I make, I want to make sure is it good for Columbia County and Columbia County Utility Committee? I'm not going shotgun. I want to make sure that this board supports, I got to support this board on the decisions being made.
Just that simple.
And we know your interest in economic development and industrial parks. So you'll be the one to do that. We appreciate it, Mr. Williams.
And if they don't change the schedule again, Ron, the next meeting I got a thing was 23rd.
The last two have been canceled.
Yeah, last two been, but the latest and the greatest is March 23rd.
March 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Next?
Yes, sir.
Any more commissioner comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I got a, I'd like to give everybody an update. Myself and Paula were invited to FWC on the money that we allocated or budgeted. We didn't allocate, we budgeted it for the Montgomery Lake Pier. Myself and Paula in FWC, Mr. Greg Bailey was there from North Florida Possessional Services. And while I mentioned his name, in the design of this project, he offered his services pro bono. That was a, that was a real big deal and I commend him for doing such. I, not as a commissioner, but just as a dock builder, I worked the budget for him. I presenting a design. My company will not be bidding on this in any form, fashion whatsoever. My whole goal was, is I'd just like to see a pier go out there. If it's, if it's doable, that's going to be there for the next 100 years. While in the meeting, one thing I wanted, the main reason I wanted to update the board, I stressed to the mayor that although I do support this, it's in my district, it's in Columbia County, and it's our responsibility to protect the lifestyles of everybody that lives around that lake. That lake is a kind of a unique lake where people live within 75 yards from the bank of it. And so whatever we do out there, some of the problems that, you know, one of the local residents there, Mr. Hudson, has been at every single meeting there was. He was TDC the other day with y'all, wasn't he, Rocky? And so I just, I want to do our proper diligence. And then if this board decides to fund whatever money we decide to do, I want a guaranteed agreement in between the county and the city. We're funding money, they're doing this, but that park has got to come under stringent guidelines. You know, we all know the issues that's happened over there over the last 30 years. I got a guy sleeping down there right now on the picnic table for the last two and a half months. Made the call, he's still there. That's all I can say. But as I pointed out to the mayor, and I was putting him in his place, you know, I can't agree to this if the city of Lake City can't bring me back a plan how they're going to continue to fund this thing every single, you know, because if we do it, we're going to have the same mess out there. You know, right by there, I challenge every one of you, it's kind of pitiful what we're looking at there. And it's right in the heart of Lake City. So I, my goal is to, not only as a commissioner, I just want to make sure this is a jewel, but it's got to be maintained as a jewel, you know? And I mean, me and Ron, the two oldest ones up here, and what we call the tree of knowledge down there, look what it looks like today. You know, it's something worth looking at. But of course, but anyway, that, I just wanted to bring y'all up to date with that. It's my understanding, hadn't talked, this rumor on the street, the city may be requesting a meeting with us as board members just on this situation here to what they would do and what they expect the county to do. Don't have no detail to that, but FWC's been doing a great job. I think there was Rocky and his TDC board yesterday did a good presentation. They're going out to some private providers possibly. And so it's looking good. But again, Greg Bailey attended and I thought that was off the chain. You know, he basically give this project, you know, a $30,000 gift, the way I look at it. I appreciate it.
Any more commissioner comments? We have a motion adjourned.
So move.
Commissioner, we do appreciate you taking your time to discuss the broadband.